Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 23 River Falls Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristy, can we roll call please?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morset.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we'll have approval of the minutes from the May 9th meeting.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll have approval of the bills with Mr. Downing.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move approval of bills in the amount of $265,757.76, subject to the comptroller.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be your time. Yep, please come forward. Just state your name and sign in there and...
I'm Joel Skinner, I'm from Holton, Wisconsin, but I'm here on behalf of the St. Croix Valley Habitat for Humanity. I'm the Vice Chair of the St. Croix Valley Habitat Affiliate here with offices in River Falls, but we serve the counties of St. Croix and Pierce. Our Board Chair, Maureen Ottwell wished to be here, she sends her regrets, she's fulfilling her duties at the City of Prescott City Council Meeting this evening at the same time. And likewise, a member of our Executive Committee, Don Richards wished to be here, he is at a Turning Point Board Meeting this evening. But I'm accompanied by Heather Logland, from a member of our board, and Chuck Bader, who are in the front row. This is a, I'm here to speak about an item that's on your consent agenda, and it is related to Habitat. This is, these comments are from our full board, so I'm going to refer to my notes. Our full Habitat Board recently met with your City Administrator, Scott Simpson, that meeting was held last Monday at our regular board meeting. And then the best problem solvers from our board met with Scott at length yesterday. As a result of those meetings, our board now has a clear understanding of Habitat's past agreements and obligations to the city. So I have three important things to say to you, and then I'll stick around and answer questions if you have any. First and foremost, our board apologizes for the distress that this matter must have caused Mr. Simpson, the mayor, and council members. That we allowed our dealings to reach a point where you're about to take action on the agenda item you have before you was clearly wrong on our part. We specifically regret that we ceased loan payments entirely for the past 12 months on our note. Secondly, I want you to know that this board does take responsibility for all of the actions, agreements, and obligations of past boards and staff members of Habitat. And then, the most important thing, we are going to take steps to remedy the situation we have within the issue with City of River Falls. I can't say exactly what those steps are because we haven't had an opportunity to meet as a full board to consider them, but I can say the following things. Firstly, we can and will finish every action that our board needs to take within 30 days. We will consider every asset and revenue stream of Habitat in resolving this issue, everything that we can give. We'll also consider every expense that we may have to cut. In short, nothing will be left off the table in our deliberations as a board for Habitat. I should mention that we have an existing business that generates income for Habitat, it's very important to us, that's our Restore Building Supply Business in Roberts, Wisconsin. This week, our board reached out to the Habitat Support Organization in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. It's an organization that supports the approximately 29 Habitat Affiliates in Wisconsin. We had not done that, we have now. We also reached out to the Habitat International Office in Americas, Georgia. And we're seeking advice from them on managing our organization and our finances so we can remedy our situation with the city. And we'll continue to use those resources. Lastly, and most importantly, you've waited for 12 months, I think, to hear from us. The proposal that we believe we'll have within 30 days will be complete and final. It won't be piecemeal, it won't be a Band-Aid such that we'll be back at negotiations later. We, you've waited long enough, but we do need 30 more days. So this is what I'm asking, we're asking that you postpone action on the resolution on your agenda for 30 more days to give the board to directly, or to continue to directly negotiate with, and work with, Mr. Simpson to remedy this matter. In closing, I just want, the board wishes you to know that it wants to restore the positive relationship that Habitat had with the city when the Eco Village project was undertaken. A lot of the matters with our debt due concern the Eco Village here in River Falls. That Eco Village was a successful partnership that provided needed, affordable, energy-efficient housing in River Falls. We want to continue to be your partner in this matter, so, thank you very much. If you have any questions, I can answer them now, I can also stick around if you need me later.
Thanks Minister Skinner, no, we'll move on now.
Okay.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Is there anybody else in the audience has anything they'd like to say?
Good evening. I'm Frances Ogden, I've been a resident of the city for 47 years, and I've put my thoughts in writing... So, I could have said much more, but I limited it to one sheet of paper, large printing and double spaced so I can still read it at age 80. So... I am pleased you are finally starting this process. It probably should have been initiated a year ago. As a 47-year resident of the city, I am concerned. You gave St. Croix Valley Habitat for Humanity five acres of land and an interest-free loan of $400,000. They have not made their required monthly payments since May of 2016, and they currently owe $263,000 plus penalties. I was a member of St. Croix Valley Habitat for Humanity from the time it became an affiliate of Habitat for Humanity International in 1998 until December 31, 2009. I was a member of the Board of Directors for over 11 years and served in various capacities. I left the organization because a college professor convinced the majority of the Board of Directors that Eco Village was a good idea. I said it was not economically feasible when building affordable housing for low-income families. When I and several other leaders who had created a successful and financially sound organization left, those who replaced us did not have the needed zeal and skills. The poor leadership of the Board of Directors has created this crisis. When the leadership changed, the risk of doing business with the organization dramatically increased. Former Councilman Tom Cafflish recognized this fact and wisely expressed concern and voted no. The majority of the council supported subsidizing Eco Village. I encourage you to vote in favor of the resolution, and I would add, do not postpone that action, it's needed, it should have been done a long time ago. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ogden, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that has something like, yep?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, just a quick note, I realize we're three weeks out before we're going to have an open house on the Glen Park, next stage of the planning process, you all got invites to that, but for our audience that's on TV, and maybe that's their form of getting those type of notices, again, it'll be in the paper, on the website, et cetera. But on June 14, Wednesday, we're planning an open house to show and share different looks, tastes, feels for the various components that are in the master plan that are now just starting to get some traction into the preliminary design, so mark it on your calendars, June 14, 4 to 6. Currently, our plan is to have it here in the training room, possibly could change to the library, so check our website, check our ad in the paper, but plan on being there if you're interested in Glen Park, thank you.
Thanks, Reed. Is there anybody else in the audience that has anything they'd like to stand up and say? Otherwise, we'll move on, first thing we'll do is, we'll actually close the council here and open up a public hearing on the annual liquor license and beer license renewals, hearing a disposition by motion on each license. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say about liquor licenses? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and recess and go back into the council hearing. And before we start, anything, does any of the council members, does anybody have any questions about the liquor licenses?
Mr. Mayor, there are two new agents being proposed tonight, and I was wondering if I might ask those agents to come forward, and I have three questions that might surprise the rest of you that I have for them. That would be the River Falls Golf Course and the Dollar General, I don't know if they're present today or not.
Yep, come on up.
As, as some of the people in the room know, I ask every agent who is going to assume that duty, three questions, they're very simple questions, don't be nervous. So, either one of you can answer them, you can answer them together, I really don't care, but do you understand the role of an agent?
Yes.
Yes.
Ma'am, do you understand that you're responsible for any liquor infractions even if you're not present?
Yes.
Okay, and then do you, have you taken your responsible bartending license, or responsible server's certificate?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, guys. The first thing we're going to do is, we're going, I'm going to do a roll call, just to make sure all the agents are here. Seeing as, a few years ago, the council decided they would like all the agents here for this. I have to do a stand-up, let me know you're here. We'll start with Am West Inc., which is Bob and Steve's, is that agent here, thank you. Next, we'll move on to Indian Head Oil Company, which is the Holiday Station, okay, thanks Dean. And then we'll move on to the Falls Theater. Okay, then the Kenny Cafe. Pizza Hut. Okay, Steve's Pizza. Okay. Hang on a second here. Okay, then we'll do American Legion. Okay. Then we'll do Bo's and Mine. Okay. And Bros might not be here, he is here. Thanks, Eric. Okay, then we'll go into Emma's Bar. Okay. Then we'll do Juniors. Okay. Then we'll go into Main Streeters. Okay. Mariachi Loco. Okay. Mavericks Corner Saloon. Okay. Mel's Mid-Towner. Okay, Dean. Moonshiners. Okay. River Falls Copper Kettle. Okay. The Moose Lodge. Okay. The Golf Course. Okay, they are here. And Shooter's Pub. Okay. St. Croix Lanes. Okay. Oh, where are we, Westwind. Okay. And then Divine Liquors. Okay. The Dollar General Store. Okay. Family Fresh. Okay. Quick Trip. 1 and 453?
Yep.
You do both, right? Okay. Oh, there you are. Perfect. Shopko. Okay. Walgreens. The Whole Earth Market. Okay. And, let's see, we have... We did the Kenny Cafe already. The River View Event Room and Kitchen. Dan, okay, Dan. We did Steve's, we got that, and I think that should do it, okay. Johnny's? Don't say Johnny's, sorry, guys. You're here. Perfect. Okay, and I think that, is there anybody I missed? Okay, thanks, guys, I appreciate everybody being here. Okay, so, what we'll do is, we'll do each, we'll do each class, and I'll list the bars, or restaurants, or stores under that class. So we'll start with the Class A Beer Licenses, and for that, it is both Bob and Steve's. So I'll entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve the proposed Class A Beer Licenses for, for those listed.
Second. All in favor?
Sir, can we make that contingent that all licensing requirements are met?
Yes. Yes. Certainly.
Okay, first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to Class A Beer and Class A Cider Licenses, and the only thing under that would be Holiday.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval to grant renewals for Class A Beer and Class A Cider License only, licenses contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to the Class B Beer Licenses, and that would be Falls Theater, Kenny Cafe, Pizza Hut, and Steve's Pizza.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we grant the renewal for the Class B Liquor License, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next will be the combination Class B Liquor and Class B Beer Licenses, and that would cover the American Legion, Bo's and Mine, Bros Sports Bar and Grill, Emma's Bar, Johnny's Bar, Junior's Bar and Restaurant, Main Streeters Bar and Grill, Mariachi Loco, Mavericks Corner Bar, Corner Saloon, Mel's Mid-Towner, Moonshiners, River Falls Copper Kettle, River Falls Family Center Moose Lodge, the River Falls Golf Course, Shooter's Pub, St. Croix Lanes, and Westwind Supper Club.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we grant the combination Class B Liquor and Class B Beer Licenses, contingent on all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next would be the combination Class A Liquor and Class B Beer Licenses, and this would be Divine Liquors, Dollar General, Family Fresh, Quick Trip Store Number 301, and Quick Trip Store Number 453, Shopko, Walgreens, and Whole Earth Market.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we grant the combination Class A Liquor and Class A Beer License, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next would be Class C Wine Licenses, this would be for the Kenny Cafe, River View Event Room and Kitchen, and Steve's Pizza.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead, Al.
I move that we grant renewal of the Class C Wine Licenses, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that should do it for licenses.
Congratulations.
There you go, that wasn't so hard. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Watch the mass exit.
Okay, next, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Well, we'll wait till everybody clears out first. Okay, next we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. First is acknowledgment of the following minutes, the EMS Board from 36, the Planning Commission from 52, the Park and Rec Advisory Board from 419. Next one is a resolution regarding 60-month extension for approval of final plat for Sterling Ponds. This would allow a five-year extension to final file plant for the remaining phases of the development in Sterling Ponds. Next is a resolution approving loan committee membership. This resolution would approve the appointments of John Lizowski of the Security Financial Bank, and Todd Schultz from the River Falls State Bank to the city's loan committee. Next one is a resolution approving purchase of plow truck and sale of surplus equipment. This resolution would approve the purchase of a 2017 demo truck, and also a trade-in of the 2001 Freightliner resulting in a net purchase price of $155,993. Staff will bring back a recommendation for financing the purchase at a later date. Next one is a resolution authorizing city administrator and the city attorney to call promissory note of the St. Croix County Habitat for Humanity due to non-payment. This resolution would authorize the city attorney to proceed with action to declare the promissory note from St. Croix County Valley Habitat for Humanity in default due to non-payment. Next one is a resolution approving assignment agreement, the IOG Legacy Hotel. This resolution would approve the assignment agreement for the Legacy Hotel. Does anybody want to poll anything?
I'd like to poll six for just further discussion.
Okay. Anybody else? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion on the rest.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda numbers 2, A through C, 3, 4, 5, and 7.
Second. I have a quick comment if I could, Mr. Mayor, I, one of the questions that I did have of staff was about, with the sale, the assignment agreement with IGO Legacy Hotels was whether or not the property tax, and more importantly, the room taxes were current, and they are, so that was investigated and found to be the case, so.
Okay.
That's the only comment I have.
So I got a first and a second on the rest of the consent agenda, any other questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Mr. Bjork, you polled number 6?
I did, I just want to make sure before we approve this that everybody understands what's happening, and if there's any other comments that might be out there in the public that need to be shared on this. I just don't want anything hid that, and I really appreciate, Mr. Skinner, that you came and shared that the city has done all that they could to try to keep communications going for the year, and that, so that's much appreciated. As you know, we haven't heard those communications for too long, so, but I appreciate that you came forward with that, but I don't know if anybody else has anything else that they want to say before this gets approved or not, but I just wanted to make sure.
I'll make some comments, I had longer comments, but I'll curtail them a little bit, I was happy to hear Mr. Skinner's comments tonight. As a council member, I found some of the communications very disappointing, I'm glad to hear that that tone has changed. I was a member of the Rochester Habitat for Humanity Board, and I believed in the mission because it was a hand up, not a hand out, and I think that Habitat still maintains that today. This, this is a way that the city was giving a hand up, and, and again, the, the relationship has not been what it should be going forward. I appreciate the request to extend for 30 days, but to be honest with you, I think it's in the city's best interest, the residents of the city, as well as the taxpayers, as well as the fund, which is not city funds, just so everybody understands, those funds are in a pool intended for low-income housing activities, of which we've had several activities that have turned out very positively. This council is the shepherd of those funds, and I think it's, it's important for us to make sure we preserve those. So for that reason, I, I'm going to be in favor of passing the resolution.
As will I. Anybody else have anything they want to say about this?
I'll just make one comment, I will also be voting in favor of the resolution, but it just authorizes the administrator and the city attorney to take action, it does not mean that they actually will take action, and I hope that you continue to work with Mr. Simpson and the rest of the city staff on this.
I'm going to echo theirs as well, I'm in favor of the resolution. I did receive a couple phone calls, I'll keep them anonymous of who made those calls, but I got some resident phone calls stating that they were in favor of the resolution for the fact that these are funds that are going to be used for future low-income housing, this isn't just a shut door, and that them funds need to be repaid, so it gives us that grant money back to be able to use for that future project, so I'll be voting in favor of the resolution.
The only thing I would add, I agree with what everybody said so far too, I was hoping for a little bit more, I greatly appreciate, Mr. Skinner, you coming forward and saying what you said to us, that was greatly appreciated. I personally was hoping for a little bit more from you folks, which we can discuss later. I'm a little concerned with the board waiting for so long to take action with us when we have been very open about everything with you folks, and we've been trying to get things done with you folks for a long time, so I'm a little concerned that it took this action for you guys to come forward with us. I think you guys really dropped the ball on this. Habitat for Humanity is a great thing, they do great things throughout the world, here, locally, and throughout the world, but I think you guys really dropped the ball on this, and hopefully, we can go forward together and figure out what we can do to get this fixed, and that's, so we'll go from there.
Let me ask one, Joel, do you think, this is a question back to you, but not even a part of what our discussion is here, our vote, but seeing your board members, there's so many that aren't even living in either of the counties, or Polk County for that matter, do you think that your board, Board of Directors, might change where they might feel that they have a little more skin in the game here? And this may be inappropriate question at this point.
All of our board members but one live in the service area, live in Pierce and St. Croix counties, which is the service area of the affiliate.
They do.
It just happens that the Eco Village project is in the city of River Falls, there are affiliate builds throughout the Chicago.
Okay, I thought there are a number of them, or Minnesota.
Okay.
I guess I have one quick comment I'd like to make, I think in the future, a criteria for best, a criteria for best practices should be entertained with the city council and the admin next time. That's all I have to say on that.
One final comment I guess I'd make is, is that we have legal documents right now that we should be confident to stand by, and that would be the way we pursue it, I would assume Attorney Gustafson would agree. Any agreement, any adjustment, any potential adjustment, any agreement that the council may consider, the only way I would be in favor of that is if that was documented in the form of either a forbearance agreement, or some amended note, or something. I truly believe we need something very formal, given the history here, so as we move forward, that's what I'd like to see.
Okay, so, moving on, we got a first and a second, no, I do need a motion, and Mr. Bjork, you...
Yep, I'm done with questions, and I move that we accept the consent agenda 6 as written.
Second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next we'll move on to reports, we got a report on the city's health reserve fund. We got a report on the city's housing reserve fund.
Mayor and counsel, I just included in the administrator's report, an update on the housing fund. There were some questions about it. Take any questions, just briefly, that we've got three projects that have been funded out of the housing fund, the first being the River Glen Project, and that was the origin of the funds. Then we have loaned again to Our Neighbor's Place, which has been repaid, and then the third loan was to Habitat, St. Croix Habitat for the Eco Village Project.
Okay.
Questions about the report?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the administrator's report. If anybody's got any questions for Scott, or Scott, if you have anything extra to tell us.
Board review is. Board review is at May 25th at 9:00 to 11:00 in City Hall. We will have a joint workshop, Memorial Day offices are closed at City Hall. June 13th at 5:00 PM is a joint workshop with the school board in the City Hall Training Room, and then our next city council meeting won't be until June 13th, that evening at 6:30. And as Reed has indicated, Glen Park, open house, June 14th, four to six, currently scheduled for the training room.
If, I'd like to elaborate on that Glen Park, too. I'm not going to be able to make it because I will be out of town that week, but I've been speaking with a great number of people, and I hope they have a chance to come there because there's a, how do I want to say it, a large population of people that are potentially opposed to what we're looking at as a city of where we're looking to put the storm shelter, and knowing that there's at this point only one location that's being discussed in the middle of the park, in the dead middle of the park, really, and there's a vast number of people that believe that there's other opportunities, and we're hoping that there's other opportunities to talk, that there's other opportunities to talk and discuss the plans that is not already set and etched in stone and etched in metal and ready to go forward, and so I'm hoping that a good number of people will be able to show up to that and that, and then multiple alternatives are offered and shown.
As a member of the park board, I can tell you, this is a great opportunity for people to come and give their opinions and their feedback, and we have built in multiple touch points with the community, and so I think we will address your concern, hopefully.
I hope so, too, and it's not just my concern.
Yes, absolutely. I understand.
Okay, anything else for Scott?
Just a little, I hate to take the last word away from a council member, so you can have another word, I guess, to make me feel better. We are operating, and we have issued the RFP and the contract for planning services based on the approved master plan document, so it's true that there's plenty of opportunity for feedback, but the council should understand that the majority of the work is being guided by that master plan, in particular, a change in location, or a significant change in, a change in location to the storm shelter from the middle to any other location would be what we would consider a significant change in our planning efforts, which is a possibility and can be directed by the council. That likely would delay the process, which is a choice the council can make, and it would also cost additional funds for us to do that, so you're probably talking between $10,000 and $30,000 of additional planning expenses to do that, and probably a one- to three-month delay in the project timeline. So that is something, if there is significant interest on the part of the council to kind of change that assumption of the plan, it would be good to hear that sooner rather than later. We're probably still in that, you know, going forward from that June 14th date, there would be a little bit of time after that to make a course correction, but after that, it could delay the project significantly. The other, the other major part, or what we consider as a kind of a pivot point, or kind of a stake in the ground, is the pool and the splash pad design work, so that could potentially proceed without knowing where the shelter is going to be, but the shelter itself is pretty significant in the overall circulation flow, et cetera, and it's also, we've got that FEMA grant that identifies that as a location, so it's something to really think about. Glad Councilman Bjork raised it, but it's something the council really, you know, you've got about 30 days or so here to kind of decide if you wanted to make a pivot or not, and if you do, then you can let us know as staff, and we can do that pivot.
Well, that was my question exactly, is delaying, does delaying this impact the grant money?
The delay in itself might not impact the grant money. We've got some time to perform, but, you know, certainly, it closes the timetable and makes it a little bit tighter for us to perform on the grant, so I think we've got, the current timetable is to get that storm shelter built ahead of the rest of the site work. If you recall, we were going to start working on that in 2018, and then kind of close the park, so to speak, in 2019 to do the rest of the work, so there's, there is legitimate room for discussion about things, but it's something that would be important for us to have that understanding sooner than later.
Maybe ask Mr. Bjork's question in a different fashion, but would a change in the location prompt us to have to go back to FEMA to request or to notify them of the change and have their concurrence or approval?
Likely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so when I've been talking to people, and before this, I was thinking blindly, I guess, or ignorantly, that what we approved was the plan in the sense that there will be a shelter, that there will be a splash pad, not necessarily this is where it is going to be, but that it was going to be now room for discussion. So I apologize for those out there saying that there was going to be room to discuss this, that, so I misled people by fault, saying that there's going to be room to discuss this. I really did think I was approving that a storm shelter was going to be installed in a yet-to-be-defined location, and again, so I apologize for that. The $30,000, I don't know for sure where you came up with that, Scott. The one to three months, I can see that perhaps, but in the, I'm just afraid that a timeframe, to look at a timeframe to get things done, that's important, but not to get things done incorrectly, because what we're building is something that's a legacy for our future, and really, not only our future, but our kids' future, and this park's been around for, as we know, over 120 years, and it's served us well so far, and it's going to serve us well in the future, and hopefully for another 120-plus years, too, but let's make sure it's done right and done properly, so I really hope we have a chance to discuss this and that we don't think, oh, we have to stay to our time schedule. If it's, if we need to slow down and see what's going on before we make a decision, I hope we do, I hope we don't march into blind waters.
Okay, anybody else got anything? Otherwise, move on to comptroller's report.
The comptroller's report for April 2017. General fund revenues through the end of April were $3,412,833, and included transportation aids and lottery credit payments from the state of Wisconsin, and $35,000 in quarterly cable franchise fees. Expenditures for the same period were $2,855,453, or 28% of budgeted, for a net of revenues over expenditures as of April 30th of $556,630.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, I got a couple announcements, I'd like to make some appointments I'd like the council to look favorably on. To the downtown design review committee, I'd like to appoint Lisa Moody as plan committee, plan commission representative, she'll be replacing Todd Schultz through the remainder of his, of the term through July of 2018. And the library board, I'd like to appoint Mr. Bob Wing, replacing Judy Caffley through the remainder of the, remainder of her term through July of 2018. And the police and fire commission, I'd like to appoint Grant Hanson, who will replace Gary Donath through the remainder of his April 2018 term.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we accept your appointments.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.